Okay, welcome everybody. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll establish a quorum with roll call. Yeah, for a bet. We got any jokes?
Here he is.
There he is. Uh, we're gonna establish a quorum with a roll call. Establish your roll.
Uh, Stephen Ford.
Here.
Kevin Mithaller. Leslie Evans. Crystal Lacy. Roger Ove.
Here.
Scott Thomas.
Here.
Guy Roden. Bettina Cogur. Six present. Have a quorum.
Uh, Mr. Mithaller will be here. He'll be about fifteen minutes late. Okay, tonight the invocation will be given by Counselor Thomas and a pledge of allegiance by Counselor Miss Cogur, if you would, right.
Father, we're thankful again for the opportunity you've given us to come here and discuss our city business, Lord. I pray, Lord, through our decisions that need to be made, that not that you just, uh, God is by your wisdom. And be sure to have a safety of travels. We head home this evening after the meeting. Pray for all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, at this time, uh, we'll look for the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Oh, make the motion for change of eighteen to twenty-one and unfinished business on industrial parkland.
Okay. Motion, have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Well, it should be for new business.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the unfinished on parkland, but I made the new business on the other.
Okay.
Alright, got a motion, got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, same sign. Alright, uh, hearing none. Introduction to special guests. We do have some new people. Sorry. Okay, Carrie, okay, alright. Special order of business, we have none. Approval of minutes for November the eleventh meeting.
Make motion approved minutes as submitted.
Motion, got a second by Ms. Cogur. All those in favor say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Onto the public comments. We have anybody out there that'd like to come up to the podium and make a public comment?
Ms. Collins.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not. If it isn't, please stop me.
Okay.
First of all, I do not live in the city limits, but there's something that's really kind of on my heart and I'd like to discuss it real briefly and then I will get out of your hair.
Well, you sit right, if you don't care, stand up so we can kinda hear you, please, ma'am.
I don't stand very well. Um, my name is Jackie Collins and I just recently learned that stray animals, there's an ordinance, a law, a rule, something that governs how long before they are euthanized. And I'm a dog lover and that really kind of troubles me. I would like to suggest, if I'm not out of order in doing so, that you all look at amending that ordinance to read that after the set number of days, that if there is an individual who is willing to purchase food for that animal, that, uh, dog catcher, whatever you call it, has a little bit of extended time to try to find an animal home. I will be willing to buy a great deal of food in order to see that happen and I think I have some friends who would be willing.
Uh, yeah, Ms. Collins, is it?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, uh, just so you know, we, we've actually broached this subject and there is some clarification that we need to make with the ordinance, to be quite honest.
May I sit down?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Uh, there is some clarification that we probably need to make to the ordinance and the fact that, we don't necessarily stipulate the timeframe as, as to when it actually starts, right? So if we intake an animal and we take it into our custody, there's a whole process that we have to go through before we get to that fifteen day window, okay? We're gonna make sure the animal's healthy, we take it to the vet, we get the check, you know, do, do everything that we can. And talking to our animal control officer, Megan, uh, she had actually brought, brought this up and, and subject, uh, probably about a week ago. And we'd had a conversation about it and I said, you know, I don't think that we really delineate in that ordinance as to when this timeframe starts. So it is something that, that we will be looking into. Uh, now, again, not making any promises because that's a vote of the council, but I will do my due diligence and we'll look into it and we really appreciate absolutely the offer that you're making or some of your friends are making, that if we do extend that timeframe, that you'll help us out with that. That means a lot to us, so.
We will be willing to, just so that it's no additional labor for anybody else, I will pick the food up and I'll deliver it, so there's no extra bookkeeping to entail. And then if it reaches the point that the, um, lady Megan needs some help with her duties around the kennel, I'll come in a couple of times a week.
We appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I, I would really, really, we're close to Christmas.
Understand.
So, and anyway, I appreciate you all listening.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Collins.
I'm, I'm a dog lover.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. Any other public comments come before us?
Am I free to leave now?
Yes, ma'am, you sure can. We'd love for you to stay, but we completely understand.
I'm, I'm probably the oldest person on this earth.
You're very welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
Have a good evening.
You as well. Alright, uh, moving on. City department reports, you've been provided an email in your agenda packet. I think the only one, which will get to him here in just a second, the only one that you didn't receive, and that's completely on me, uh, is because Brian's new to this position. I didn't have him fill out anything or, or put it in there, so we'll let him explain it to us verbatim whenever we get to him. Alright, uh, Chief, what do you got for us?
Uh, you have my submitted report. I really don't have a lot to add to that. Um, just looking for the new year and, and scheduling for train, uh, command staff training is one of the things that we're, we're looking into. I will say on our monthly reports, you have the SRO report and then you have our regular patrol report, basic. And then the last two pages are our CID report and the, the last sheet that you'll probably have there is just some notations on what are some of the cases that we're work, that he specifically is working, so. Um, really not a lot, not a lot going on. We like it that way and, um, looking forward to filling the new position. We've got, uh, several uh, applications of certified officers actually coming in, um, so we're gonna start going through those this week and maybe start doing some interviews next week. Things went really well. If those of you that was at the square for the parade, it was probably the biggest parade I think we've ever had, as far as I could tell. Um, no real, no real problems. Uh, wanna give a shout out to, uh, the three ring, what's it? The Roddy family that has Three Ring Productions, I believe is the name of the company, that brought the, the big jumbo, uh, TV and set it up over here in the parking lot and played some Christmas movies. I think everybody had a good time there, so. That was really neat.
I thought that was very added.
Yeah, it was neat. A lot of compliments on that, so. They did a great job.
Anything else? Any questions, Chief? Hearing none. Of a part, Brian?
We have serviced some vehicles, uh, burned the brush pile. We did work on the ditch at Honor Clay from the flooding. Picked up some snowplow blades to kinda stock us up for the winter. Got the sled ready for the parade. Lights?
Lights. Is that it?
It's.
Well, that's enough. And we're gonna be busy this week as well. Uh, we've got several things that we'll, I'll give in the merit report that we're gonna be doing as well, so. Brian, thank you for stepping in and thank you for what you did. Alright, Water Department. Sean, you got anything?
A little bit.
Okay.
As most of you are aware, in July of twenty-three, ADQ issued a new permit for our wastewater plant along with reduced limits. And gave us until July of twenty-six to make any necessary modifications and to meet those limits. We designed a project, estimated cost was thirty-four million and first part of this year, we started raising rates to meet that obligation. Through twenty-four, we've spent roughly seven hundred thousand on engineering and design with McClellan. In September, we submitted drafts to ADQ and the Department of Health with the expectation construction would start early next year. But in October, Butterball representatives attended our monthly commission meeting and announced that they plan to separate from our sewer plant and build their own treatment facility. This effectively puts our plans on hold until we see exactly what they decide to do and when. On the one hand, good news is that if they move forward with their plant, we won't need to borrow the thirty-four million dollars. And then we won't have to upgrade at all. We'll have plenty of room to grow for years to come. On the other hand, if they change their mind, as they're early in design, so we don't know what they'll decide long term, we'll have to reactivate this project with a much shorter window to complete it. So, uh, I've requested a meeting with ADQ to discuss our options, get their feedback as they are our enforcing agency. And then, um, work out the details of what the project might look like without Butterball, because we'll have to address downsizing, possibly still meeting some permit limits. But I felt that I wanted to make sure council and the citizens were aware of where we were at, especially considering that the new rates are supposed to go into effect again in January as a second round.
So the next rate increase, when was it supposed to be?
January first. It officially goes into effect for this billing cycle, so next month's bills will have.
Alright, man, twenty twenty-five.
Well.
The meeting's gonna be with the other before?
No, no, they reached out to me today and said that they can't sit down with us until late January. So as far as the financing goes, we have to meet the obligation before we're allowed to initiate funding per, um, Act six oh five with the state. To do that, we have to have a rate study done with a third party and that cost us forty-seven thousand, I think, in twenty-three. So if we lower the rates expecting Butterball to build their own plant and then they switch gears again, then we'll have to go through that process and that can be six to twelve months. So ADQ has recommended we leave the rates in place and whichever project we do, we can take those funds and apply it to the project, so it won't be wasted money. We just won't know where it all falls until.
And with that, uh, instead of, like, obviously the rates would take from effect January one. Uh, but we have an additional rate increase this proposal.
There'll be one more in twenty-six.
At that point in time, once we kinda get this thing figured out, we could, we could save the citizens that money at that point.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and I think we'll have to have some answers by that point.
Okay. And what was ADQ's temperature on, on? And since they're eighty percent, seventy, some odd percent of our wastewater, what were, what was their temperature on, on extending out the actual permit process for us?
I have been told it's a possibility.
Okay, good.
And if they separate, we may go from a major permit to what they classify as a minor.
Good.
Which helps us quite a bit.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Sean. Alright, moving on.
I will say the water loss looked a lot better this year.
Yes, it did, didn't it?
See, and like, at the gallons.
Well, I think we fixed ten or eleven leaks last month.
That is good. Alright, Chief Sheen.
Alright, big news for us is that the unicorn has landed and you will get to see it here after the meeting when Mr. Mayor Dodson's done. The KME is finally here and is in service. And I've got a crew that will have it for you after the meeting out in the parking lot, so anybody wants to go out and look at it. We can also grab, uh, any kind of application if you'd like to join the fire department. Help drive those things, be a part of it. We would certainly welcome that, but, uh, no pressure. Uh, so we'll have that. A couple of things. One, uh, I think some of you I know, Kristen is the captain of the fire department. Part of her duties is public relations and, and a variety of other things. Uh, she scheduled, she reached out to Paz and Claus, uh, somebody else had talked to her about doing a calendar for the fire department. And she said, well, I'm still just doing it for the fire department, let's figure out something. So she reached out to Paz and Claus and they had a photo shoot out at Station Two, so we now have, if you go on the Facebook page, you will have a fire department calendar that I'm sure each and every one of you would love to have. Uh, you get to August, you may wanna skip past that one, although I do look very pretty. She did make me keep my shirt on, so I don't know, I don't know what's that about, but. That was similar, that was similar to what she said. I don't know what that was. Anyway, so that was, they had a good time. Uh, we're hoping a bunch of those dogs will get, will get adopted. Ms. Collins maybe can pick up some of those. But you can go on our Facebook page if you'd like to buy one of those. I think Chief Thomas, I think those will be shirtless.
We did, we did do one a couple of years ago for just, actually Ronnie, Teresa Ronnie put it together. It was really pretty cool. We'll see.
I think yes.
Couple of things, more serious things. Uh, one, of course, we know we, the unfortunate circumstances at the, we lost our live-in out at Station Two, which means that the overnight coverage that we were getting credit for, we have, we have lost that. So we're looking at some policies. Talked to Mayor Dodson about creating an overnight shift from midnight, eight o'clock in the morning. Not sure what, how much we pay, but also maybe give them a bonus if they're staying at the station, which would increase, give us some of those points back that we've lost for the ISO. So we're looking at that and I think Mayor Dodson may address some of that a little bit later, because we still haven't figured out the numbers and what we do.
I'll interject now. Uh, it was brought to our attention, you know, at our last city council meeting, we'd talked about the fire that went out to, uh, down in the south part of the county, I think Pettigrew, is that correct? And one of the council members had brought it up then. Well, then we've had another conversation with a council member or two that's concerned, uh, in the situation of, of us, you know, basically covering every fire in, in Madison County. And it's been compounded, obviously, with the forestry commission going out and they splitting up all the duties of the forestry commission. But what we have done is, uh, Chief Sheen has sat down and come up with a comprehensive game plan to kinda change our policy. We're gonna, we're gonna be, uh, cabbaging on to the FEMA.
Yes. The FEMA.
The, the pay schedule for FEMA. Uh, I think twenty twenty-one was the last updated version.
Yeah, and they update them from time to time and, and that is part, it's written into, uh, state law where we get to use this.
So explain, uh, Chief, if you don't care, to the council members, where we have to go on a five mile radius versus mutual aid.
Right. Okay. Three different organizations that, that we are accountable to. Of course, NFPA is the organization for fire departments across the country. That's, that's, that's the firefighting bible, right? They set the regulations, what we do. Act eight thirty-three is the money that we receive from the state. One percent of everybody's homeowner's insurance goes into Act eight thirty-three money and we receive that. And if we receive that, we live by their guidelines. And then, of course, there's the ISO requirements. We are required, anything within five miles of our district that we're required to respond to, we have to go. The question becomes, okay, if it is a structure fire and you have lives that are threatened, or it's a structure fire and we're gonna be sending people out there, that's one level of response. If you have a wildland fire, that's another level of response. If it is with our automatic aid partners, the people that we depend upon when the square of the apartment's on fire, that's one thing. If it's mutual aid departments, the people outside our area, different thing. So what we have worked on and, and are in the process of doing, having gone through the requirements from those, uh, agencies, we've said, okay, right now, if we had a structure fire outside the city, outside our district and out, in our automatic aid areas, we're gonna immediately respond with our engine, engine three, which is what we call Unicorn One, what I wanted to call it, the KME. Engine three, engine one, and the rescue truck. That would be our personnel. The, what used to be the squad, which is now engine two, brush truck engine, the old engine four, those will remain behind. The commanding, whoever's in charge, if they see a need, they need it, they certainly can pull it in, because life safety of our firefighters is our number one goal, making sure that we're there. Wildland fires, gonna be a different ballgame. You know, we've got two brush trucks, uh, we can send personnel with a brush truck. If we feel that it's necessary, we can send, uh, an engine with water supply. You know, the one thing that, that we do not have a capability for, and we, we had a tanker for a long time. And then when the city passed the bond money and we extended our hydrant system, the tanker became expendable and we used it to get the new squad, um, so we didn't have to pay as much money. We depend upon other departments when we're outside the city of Huntsville and parts of Huntsville for their tanker supply. So when we have wildland fires, there are tankers in the county. Uh, one of the things I have, have, I wanna say complained about, but have pointed out is that the number of firefighters in the county has dropped dramatically. The number of people who are doing that. The one thing that most departments are capable of doing are getting tankers on scene, getting water there. So if you've got brush trucks available, they can fill those up. So we're gonna try to scale back on those kinds of things. Life safety is still preeminent, right? For our people, for anybody in the community, uh, City Huntsville, as fire chief, I, I could never say we're not going, if somebody is at, at risk, we're gonna give everything we can to help those folks in our area there. That's a dramatic difference than going to St. Paul, you know? By the time we get to St. Paul, Pettigrew, some of those areas, different things. So, so we are working on that policy, been working with the mayor on doing it, so we make sure. Uh, we will continue to do what we've done in the past, is if we are leaving the city, we notify other departments. Typically, it's been Nob Hill. We've developed a fairly good relationship with Nob Hill over the years and saying, hey, we're out of here, we need somebody to be prepared to come protect us. So with that, we're also gonna be working in twenty twenty-five on updating our automatic and our mutual aid policies. Difference between automatic and mutual aid, automatic is it is supposed to be, if we have a fire, these are the departments that are supposed to be toned immediately. Uh, we've talked before about the problem with dispatch sometimes not, not being consistent on how that gets done. But we're gonna update those policies and get those to them. That's, that's a requirement, it's supposed to be done anyway. We're gonna get that done. So that has to be written in and agreed to. Then there's the mutual aid policies, which are different. That's a, those are those departments that are outside of our response area. How do we respond to those?
So basically, anything that we go to outside that five mile radius around town, we'll utilize the, um, FEMA pay schedule.
Now, for the FEMA pay schedule, okay. So with that, if there, if we go anywhere outside the city, including our own fire district, which is part of what I want to talk about as well, if you are a non dues paying member of that area, FEMA allows us to charge them for the equipment that's used and for the manpower that goes out. And I've talked to Mayor Dodson, he was looking at the chart to see how much to, the FEMA schedule is set for equipment use. Mayor and, and council are able to determine how much you're going to charge per firefighter, per officer, those kinds of things. So that we can start recouping some of the loss for these places that we go to, for people who have done things that they shouldn't do. That, there's also the area, and I think Ms. Fritz can address that, even if you're a dues paying member, all these brush fires, these controlled burns we had during the burn ban, which were illegal burns, those are also then qualifiable to charge people for doing those kinds of things. So hopefully, if we do this, and it's one of the things that you as a council and the mayor will have to adopt on the FEMA schedule and the charge rate, we can put some teeth into people burning things, doing things that they shouldn't be doing that are illegal and also helping us recoup losses for us, as well as these departments outside of us who depend totally on their eight thirty-three money and their dues money. Yeah, I, Ms. Fritz is, I think you're on the board at Form Alabama, what percentage of money do you guys get on your dues? Last time I heard it was like thirty, thirty-five percent.
Yeah, that's probably about right, yeah.
So they're bringing in, I, most of the departments are existing on twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a year and that's including the eight thirty-three money there.
Yes.
So if we can put some teeth into our response and make those, make people pay their fair share for their protection, it would also increase what goes into the other department's coffers and might help them when we need them. Because I, because Mayor Dodson gets tired of me pointing out, and everybody does, you know, when that square catches on fire, because we know it's gonna happen. And when these apartments catch on fire, because we know they're going to happen, having been there with those with limited manpower and with a more limited group of people available now, I want to encourage everything I can to increase firefighters outside the county to come help us. And this is a way for us to put some money back to cover costs like fuel and time and everything else, as well as helping ourselves and our neighboring departments.
So with that, we're, we're doing a comprehensive, uh, plan on basically what our protocol is and how we charge for them. It's gonna be an automatic thing. The thing that I'm gonna ask you all to do, uh, just for sake of time tonight, and we're, we gotta go over the budget anyway. January, um, I, I would like to have an open discussion, maybe make it a new line item for business as far as what we are gonna set the price at to charge for our firefighters and volunteers, as well as setting up a new rate structure. Maybe even before we adopt our, our twenty twenty-five budget, a new rate structure for, uh, these volunteers that'll come in and maybe spend the overnight hours at our fire station. So I'm gonna leave that up to us to have a open, open discussion in January about that. That's alright?
A question. I like the idea that we can probably get some money back or time and effort, but I have a question. So we're talking about outside of city limits and our jurisdiction's in the city limits. How are you gonna make this work where you saw, said you're going out, outside the city limits and propose charges to these folks? Without the county being involved or emergency, gotta be involved, sit there and kinda pro-rate this and guy with it?
Once you call us, once we're toned, now, now we have been. We have been brought into this and so we can charge and that's part of what this schedule is for.
So that's my other question. So then are the county, um, are they able to charge as well?
Every fire department.
Have they been so far?
To my knowledge, none of our Madison County departments have done this.
This is something that all the Madison County departments are, are, can do.
Well, that would be up to those boards. Each fire department is controlled by their own board, Miss Fritz.
To be quite honest with you, and I don't know if this has been announced yet, has it been announced about Greg Wheeler's new title?
Uh, I don't think, I think that's coming at the form court, but I don't know.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll play face there. Uh, but one thing that I'm really excited about is this Greg is gonna be more active in, in, within the rural fire departments. And the good news is, is we have a great rapport with Greg right now.
Yes.
So one thing that we haven't reached the subject of that, that Chief Sheen and I have been talking about is I plan on sitting down once, once that is official and once he, uh, if he takes the position. It's, it's one of those things that I think at that point in time, we sit down and we, we talk seriously about the finances of, okay, look, mutual aid, we understand and we gotta go if we're toned out. At the same time, we don't want any consequences or repercussions whenever we bill these people for the fires that we've put out, right? And maybe some type of cooperative with the county at that point in time to get reimbursed for some fuel or maybe some products that we lost, like an air pack or something of that nature.
Well, or for example, uh, F five hundred, which is, is equivalent to, uh, uh, foam, right? We use that on structure fires, because it helps reduce the fire, it does quick, but that's expensive. It's expensive every time we use that, so we can charge for that. Uh, sometimes you burn up a hose line, right? Air packs, things go up there. Anything that is used on scene that is, that is gotta be replaced, that's where that comes into this.
We have a very cooperative situation right now with the city and county. Last it wasn't available until Greg actually took the position that he's got now and the fact that like these, you know, we were, Kevin had mentioned earlier in the year about these, uh, washing machines that we need for our turnout uniforms. Uh, the, the county is the one that's kinda, they're gonna put the bill for us on that. So we'll look at all these things together. I'm, I'm saying that we have a good opening, open relationship in regards to being able to communicate this and, and sit down. I'm satisfied that we'll work something out as far as the county and the city goes.
See, I think it's very key that Huntsville's gonna do this, that be involved with the county to make sure they're part of that, because when it goes on board, all the other rural fire departments are on board and they know what they can do and what they can't do, then Greg Wheeler's kinda gonna be able to, or the big umbrella of that. And probably, probably the key person over all this, really. And then there's gonna be a very good education thing, let the public, the public really know that, uh, you have a fire of any sort, this could be charged.
If you're a dues paying member, it's a different cost. I mean, and then that would probably raise the number of people interested in dues paying members out. From thirty percent, hopefully up to much higher.
Yes. You know, and there's been efforts on the county level. I know Japton tried to get it where it's on the tax rolls, which is, is permissible, you can do those things. I, and it's possible, but again, when you look, a new air pack is over ten thousand dollars, right? A, a set of turnouts is forty-five hundred dollars. And so for departments that their entire budget is twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for fuel and everything else, so if we can. So if we can do this and we can get these people on board and, and Greg doing what I think, what he will be doing. That allows us to have more unified front if we can get all of the fire departments on board.
Yeah, cause I know like Form Alabama, I mean, we spent some money a couple of years ago sending postcards out. And it helped some, yeah, I mean, it did help as a reminder, but we still weren't getting a huge turnover from that.
There are things that you can do, so for example, if you own multiple parcels of property within addition, you would get charged one due for that. Now, if you have properties in different districts, then by all rights, you should pay for each district in there. That's, that's part of it, but we gotta do something.
I think the, the, the key to this whole thing is, is we're kind of ahead of the ballgame. Got full-time firefighters. Um, the county depends on rural volunteer fire departments. Right now, as we sit here and we speak about it, there's been more pro activism, my apologies. I thought I had my, my break on, my apologies. But, um, there's been more pro activism, if you will, uh, with the rural fire departments in regards to Greg having, uh, went out, maybe even talking about auditing some of these places. And there's some of them just barely getting by. So with his input and his ability, uh, and him being a rural firefighter for as many years as he has. I really think that he's going to put them on the same page as us and, and we're, we're going to have that cooperative where we.
And Greg, at, at the state level, they are trying to put more teeth into the Act eight thirty-three requirements. The training requirements, the equipment requirements and things necessary that have not been there. Greg has already been going out, just in his position as DEM, he's been going to these different departments and, and had a chance to kind of see the state of what we were dealing with, what's going on out there. So this gives him an opportunity to have a little bit more, a little bit more power to make some things happen, uh, as well as the NFPA requirements. And, and we've talked about the OSHA requirements and things that, that are still out there for us. And again, keep in mind, we have, we do have two career guys that are here Monday through Friday from seven thirty to five, uh, parts of those days. But we are still heavily dependent upon volunteers and making sure that those people are taken care of and, 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 because that's, that's what we are going to depend upon. Especially night fires, which is when we have more night. One other thing in conjunction with this, make sure everybody understands, we have, the city of Huntsville has the city limits. That's, that's one fire district. And that's where we've been working really, really hard to get that. We are now at that class three ISO rating. We also have a significant fire district south of town that is, is a class five. That is part of us. And you know, for, you know, years ago, when I was very young, we were the only fire department in the county. And then new parts came along and they took parts here and there. And now we have twelve other fire departments in the county. But we still have that southern district that is the Huntsville Fire Department. And it, for me to get there on a medical call on the southern end of it, sometimes it takes nearly thirty minutes just to get down. If you go seventy-four east all the way down Lower Horton, that's us back in through there. And then you try to get fire engines and stuff back in there as well. So, and I'm not sure Carmen, if you've had, I don't know if you've even looked at that kind of stuff, but I don't think our dues response has been that high. And it's been thirty-five dollars a year. And I still suggest that we raise that to at least sixty dollars a year, you know, for fire protect, fire and medical protection. That's not a ma, you know, five dollars a month is not a massive ask for what you get in return when you need it. So that's something else that you all have to address.
So the south part's the only.
Well, and then there's some, we have, and I don't know if y'all have ever seen the fire district map, but if not, I will get you a copy next meeting in here. Well, on the periphery, anything outside the city of Huntsville, city limits around us, there are some on the northern side. Uh, some over on the, uh, uh, western side, but the bulk of it, the biggest part is that southeastern side. You know, down between, go down twenty-three, four, you can go out four twelve to Rock Crusher, the Rock Crusher Road there. And then come back in and then go all the way down to seventy-four, so.
Do that, give us a.
Map, sure. Yeah, that would help, I think you'd, you'd see some.
So do you mail them dues to the district or are they?
That is.
We send it down to the forestry, right? And the forestry sends.
Yes, forestry helps us send.
Yes, they send out the, out the bills.
And they're sent monthly or at the start of the, at the start of the year?
I think at the start, yeah. Have you ever, I mean, you, have you ever gotten one? I mean.
Inside the city wouldn't get, shouldn't get one.
No.
Well, I was just thinking, if we're going to do it, we need to.
And I was wondering, I was like.
I get, I get one for the property down in South Village once a year that we.
Yes.
When, when do you get?
And this, was it March?
It depends on how quickly we get the list to him. They'll send them out right away. It's just last year, we went through, we got a new list from the county and we had to go through it and take out duplicates. And it took longer to get that done. So they didn't go out as early as they might have. It's the same list for two or three years before we update it. So if we, if we're not updating the list, then we sit till first of the year.
Any other questions, Chief Chin? Good conversation.
I think we need to get that put in next month if we're going to increase it, that way we can get it done in time to send it out. We have time that I'd like to talk to a couple.
All right. Yeah, we can do that. Um, next up, finance director, what you got for us?
I have nothing financial, but, um, I gave y'all a flyer for our Christmas party. It's next Wednesday, the eighteenth. And, um, the water department has graciously offered to, uh, have it catered by Milner's. Um, if y'all want to bring a dessert or a side, y'all don't have to, but y'all can. And it's at noon at the Bastion Building.
That it? Any questions of Carmith? I think y'all got a personal invite here. Okay. Uh, let's see, oh, my report. All right, mine's going to be quick. Uh, update, I'm just going to give you some updates here. Update on the airport hangar project, uh, we have finally gotten the pad started. Uh, knock on wood that the building that we ordered, uh, out of Ohio, uh, is going to be here later on this week or first part of next week. We'll have to store it. Uh, we've run into a little bit of an engineering hiccup. Come to find out that the company that we, we bought this from Full Fab, they do not, uh, have engineered plans of, of actual, uh, concrete foundation and building of this. So we asked Charlie Presley to help us out, uh, and he's supposed to have something within a week. So, so Peyton Con will be building that out for us. Uh, but other than that, uh, we're, we're still on schedule as far as that go. Update on this flash pad, the equipment will be delivered this week. Brian and his crew will probably be down there mid to the last part of the week unloading it. So it's still on schedule. It took them every bit of, uh, the eight to twelve weeks of delivery. It took them every bit of that, but we're still, they still assure me that we're going to be on schedule for opening, uh, in, uh, time for season in twenty twenty-five. Uh, today we honored, uh, Jim Dickinson, a local veteran, uh, and also the county's VSO, uh, for, um, we, we awarded him, this is our first inaugural, first time ever, uh, volunteer citizen of the year award from the city of Huntsville. And aptly so, we will name, uh, this award moving forward, we'll give out one of these every year, uh, to an outstanding citizen, whether volunteerism or whatever the case may be. And we will name it the Jim Dickinson Volunteer Award.
Good.
Uh, he is retiring, so if you get half a chance between now and the thirty-first of December, go by and, uh, and wish him well. An, an absolute asset to the veterans of our community as well as. Um, the Christmas parade was obviously phenomenal this year. Reiterate what Chief Thomas said, uh, in my opinion, it's the largest parade that we've ever had, ever. It was, uh, I was driving, got the luxury of driving a, uh, a queen in the parade. And this is the first time ever that I can remember driving all the way through the square, back around to where we started from and the fire trucks were just leaving. So that's a big old parade. Fantastic job. Uh, thank you. Thank you for what you all have done for, and thank you, uh, for what you've done for the parade. Uh, Thursday of this week around two PM, we haven't had, we don't have this in stone as of yet. Uh, we'll be honoring, uh, the renaming of the fields of the airport. Um, with our sign dedication that we're going to be having. So that's this Thursday around two. I'll send out a reminder, Carmen will send you all a reminder. Uh, I'm just wanting to make sure that all of Mr. Coger's family can attend this. Uh, and we're going to just have a sign unveiling up there. Brian and his team down there at the street department have done a phenomenal job of, of getting everything up. Um, so be looking for a text or an email or something to that effect to let you all know that. Uh, we will be advertising the positions, uh, this week hopefully, uh, for, uh, Mr. Mythaller's, uh, position. And Ms. Evans' position, we have to advertise those because we've kind of set that precedence. It's what we've done, uh, for my position whenever I become mayor, so that's what we're going to do. Um, now, Mr. Mythaller and, and Ms. Evans, Mr. Myfather, Myfather was under the weather whenever he, uh, was supposed to get the petition. I think he had COVID at the time, he didn't get his petition signed. He has shown interest in serving again, so has Ms. Evans. So if we don't have any applicants and we don't have the interview or whatever, we'll be reappointing them too. Uh, but we're going to start that this week, so we'll be looking for it, it'll probably close within two weeks. Uh, that is it from the mayor's report. And then we'll get into the industrial parkland, which you all have been waiting patiently for us back there, uh, here in just a moment. Um, economic development director, Brad, do you got anything?
Just wondering if anybody had any questions on the Pleasure AI report or did I say, did you receive it?
Yes.
Okay. So that did give us an idea of our Christmas lighting over the year from comparison to twenty twenty-four. We had two thousand, two thousand point four thousand people at the twenty twenty-three, and this year we upped that by a hundred people, fifty-five. So we had, we're, the software allows us to track events and things of that nature. So I do not have current parade stats because it's three days lag on data, so we'll have a study in weeks.
Hi, sir. AI, are you paying off for us? How about that? Anything else? Okay. Uh, planning director, Jennifer?
Um, currently average month. You guys have my submitted report? Any other questions?
That's pretty easy, wasn't it? Uh, building inspector report was included, code enforcement officer, uh, should have been included, uh, animal control officer. They were included with.
It was, the animal control was there. I, I did not give the code enforcement. Yep.
He'll be outside, you can ask him when you get there.
All right. Yeah. Got any questions for him? Hit him up out there to new truck. Uh, all right, commission and committee reports, uh, they were emailed with the agenda packet. We had an economic development tourism meeting on November the nineteenth and airport commission meeting November the nineteenth. I will add to that airport commission, I attended it. Uh, there's been some requests of that commission that I'll be bringing, uh, before you all, uh, early part of next year. Uh, some things that they're wanting to do, uh, some great ideas that they had up there. So I'll be bringing those to you. Water and sewer commission meeting November the twenty-first. Uh, planning commission meeting November twenty-fifth, park commission meeting, we have not had one. Chief, we've got to schedule one. Um, wage and salary, uh, committee meeting, uh, was November the eleventh. Unfinished business. Update on industrial parkland. So, um, tickled to death and, and pleased to announce tonight that we've got some absolute phenomenal, uh, bids that have exceeded, uh, our, our minimum. Um, I have been requested, this come in, and so I'm going to leave this up to you all. I was requested, uh, Friday, the, uh, fourth at five fifty-one PM. Um, a gentleman by the name of Kerry Clark says that he's a commercial developer looking for the, uh, property in Huntsville to develop for a GSA client. Um, and he's looking, and I, I got a little bit of his information from him today, whenever I contacted him back. He's, he's formally requested that, um, he's in Dallas, he's out of Dallas. Um, legitimate, from what I understand or what I see, I don't know him. Uh, but from everything that I've researched about the, about him, he is absolutely legitimate. He had actually happened onto us. He was up here looking for, he's, he's looking to do a project for the government. Didn't elaborate on what that was. He did say it was office space and maybe some mixed use stuff. Um, and I'm not going to speculate, we've had interest from the government in the past, looking for forty-five hundred to five thousand square foot office space. Um, and anyway, he, he had said that he was up here just by happenstance, or not up here, but had, had looked at twelve point six four acres out here at the corner of, uh, four twelve and twenty-three. And he said that he was just kind of Googling and, and searching and he came across our website and had the details there. And he said, I know it's probably, uh, premature to ask, but he said, if you will give me until the twentieth, I would like an opportunity to bid on that property. I said, well, here's the deal. I said, we've had some good locals that have bid on the property. We've got, uh, really good proposals right now. Uh, actually already have an ironclad real estate, uh, agreement sent to us. Uh, and I said, so tonight we're meeting, but if that is your request, I will bring it up to you all. Uh, now, mind you, we didn't specifically have a closing date until really Friday of last week. It was after the hours that we typically work at five fifty-one. Uh, and, uh, I want to be fair to the people that are here too, uh, in what we're doing. Uh, so I'm not going to make a suggestion as to what we do, but he has, this gentleman Kerry Clark with Founder's Development Company is his company's name. Uh, he said that he would, it would take him until the twentieth to get up here, figure out what he wanted to do. But he said, if I, if I want your property, he said, I'll, you'll have a contract in hand. He said, probably a cash deal and that, that we can close on at any time. Now, with that said, uh, the, the people that are here tonight, uh, Blue Ribbon Properties are representing Blue Ribbon Properties. They have made an offer that I will, um, that I will make formal tonight of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the property. If y'all will remember, we had a, uh, we had an offer from the Kegels at two hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars with a, uh, ten thousand dollar earnest check. Uh, we had the offer that Jennifer had brought to the table from, uh, or I'm assuming had worked with them. Casey Kleinhans, which backed out later on, it was an actual offer of three hundred and six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. But they were waiting on some government funds to, to make, to close that deal. So take those two offers off the table. One, one because I think they backed out and the other one because they didn't meet the criteria that we set for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar minimum bid on it. So, uh, I'll leave it in your hands as to what to do, uh, with this. Um, I will be happy to, uh, visit with Mr. Clark if that's what you see fit. Uh, if not, we, the, the, the suggestion that I would have is, uh, if you all don't want to, uh, entertain him for ten or eleven days, uh, that I would suggest that we, uh, take the Blue River Properties contract as is, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
So we had, we already had.
Yes.
So we have enough details to know what reasons, because of the road and because of the traffic.
Yes, a, a, and so.
I think that still stands.
Yeah. And so, Mr. Clark, um, in, in what detail I got from him today over about a thirty-five minute phone conversation, obviously calling from Dallas. I said, hey, look, the road situation, we've allowed some variances in the past, but if you're putting anything commercial or mixed use up there, you know, we're going to ask for that road. He said that, you know, it's not a problem. He said, I did look at the access on a top, topal map or Google Earth or whatever. And he said, I understand what you're saying about that, it's going to have to be expanded and all that. He said, this would be light, so telling you, and then I'll let, I'll let them get up and say what they're planning on doing, if anything, at this point in time. Um, but he had said that, that he was looking at, um, forty-five hundred to five thousand square foot. Um, light, commercial, like office style, um, business offices, if you will. And then with that much land, he said that he would like to develop the rest of it. And then with that much land, he said that he would like to develop the rest of it and have maybe some townhomes and things of that nature. That's full transparency from his side. That's what he told me. Now, if y'all would like to explain what y'all are thinking about potentially doing. It doesn't matter, you can come up here or speak from there if you'd like.
So what we've looked at, because obviously we don't know if we've got it, so we're just looking at planning. And we looked at the front, which is connected to the Senior Activity Center. But there's that one little area next, that area next to it, that's adjacent to it. We'd like to put in maybe a, not really assisted living, but somewhat assisted living for individuals that just need help, older people or whatnot. And then the back part of it, because we know around, you know, nobody can afford a house around here. So we were looking at doing affordable homes, nice homes, that the people in our county can afford.
So, so let me ask you this. You mentioned at the beginning of this, that it's close to the senior center.
Well, on the map that we got, that was sent to us, a little layout, there said there was like a little senior activity center or something there. That's what it said on there. It was, I don't know who gave us that layout.
I'm not sure where you got that. But you're actually, as a crow flies, about a mile from the senior.
Well, on that, because we went and looked out there, there's an old abandoned house, and it's neither here nor there. We were just assumed, we were going, that's what we wanted to do up front anyways, to something like a, not really assisted living, but just have somebody that, you know, where you could, you know, if you were old or retired, we'd have maybe help with their homes or cooking and that kind of stuff. It's kind of, you know, what's popular now. And then in the back part.
I know where you, I know what you're talking about. That land directly overlooks Rous Coleman. Correct? That's, that's what you're talking about, yes, directly across the street. I know what you're saying.
The Cedar.
Cedar. See, that is assisted living over there, that makes sense. I thought you were talking about the Senior Activity Center.
Well, just whatever it says, and we, I don't know where we got the layout.
It's okay.
It has, it's in yellow around, and it says it on there, and there's this abandoned house there right now. I don't know whose it is, and we swear like, well, that'd be good, we can put something there. But that doesn't mean anything, we were going to, that's what we wanted to put up front anyway. And then in the back, the rest of the acreage, try to do more affordable homes and that people in our county can afford.
Like 200 to 300,000. And if you're concerned on how it would end up looking, we are well financed and we owned a business for 33 years. Ran that in the construction business. We have built homes before. We are now retired from the business that we sold in 2020. It would not end up being a junk heap. It would end up being very nice, well-appointed. We did this quite quickly just because we didn't even know it was for sale until the very end. And I had been looking for 10 acres and above, just for enough water. I've called probably Rodney at the Water Department a thousand times about different properties. So we've been looking for a long time. We would have a better detailed plan for you, but it was just kind of a fast thing. I talked to Jennifer, I got my bid in, just like under the gun, right? I mean, like, we were like.
No, and we do appreciate it. The thing that I'll say is, is again, to you all, I certainly appreciate working with you. And I appreciate Jennifer stepping in and helping me with the contract aspect of it. My question would be this, the only thing that we left out was earnest money. Would you all be interested in that?
Whatever you want.
That's the thing, after looking at the contract today, I sent it over to Jessica Fritz, our attorney. And she said, the thing that I worry about, is she said, we got into this the last go around, and we didn't have any earnest money. So we didn't, we didn't gain anything by the month's worth of work that we had put into it. And I said, I understand, I said, I think you all are financially stable enough that, I don't think that would be an issue. But I said I would ask tonight, so, yeah.
I can drop your check off tomorrow. I don't think we have one in the car, but I'd be happy to bring one to the mayor's office.
I was just curious, just curious.
So are you in Northwest Arkansas?
We're at Hinesville.
Hinesville.
Yeah, so, you know, that's another thing, we were wanting to use all Madison County people to do this, you know? So we've already got like a crew, just, you know, I've got them ready, like, all right, this is what we're planning on doing, are you in? And they're like, yeah, so I hope to employ mostly everybody, all the contractors from Madison County.
So all the conversations that we've had with Planning Commissioners, and I think that we were at a Wage and Salary Meeting, approached this subject once before. For what they're talking about, would it qualify on this property?
I'm confused on your description of this property, because I know the industrial park, but what you described, this rented and all that, don't match up.
They're talking, Steve, across the highway, like, what they're looking at is a topo map in the area that's surveyed, the 23.57 acres. What they're doing is they're getting in a general vicinity. It directly overlooks, depending on how you're laying that map out, but it directly kind of overlooks the Cedar Heights subdivision.
Cedar Bluffs, Cedar Bluffs, where senior apartments are.
Where those assisted living apartments are over there in that little area. On a topo map, that's what they would be looking at. That's what they would be looking at.
Okay, so that's just something similar you'd build.
Similar, yes.
Yeah.
We want to do single-family homes and also do some kind of an ADA type assisted.
But on the industrial park property?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm with you.
Okay, yeah.
I was confused with the way the description was, I was confused that where it's located.
Yeah, I think everybody kind of had that blank loop, because we're at a senior center.
Well, in all fairness, we just, it happened so fast, and somebody just handed me a layout and said, this is it. So we drove up and looked at it, and you know, I don't have a survey either, so I'm just kind of going off of this layout. And I don't know whose it is, and so.
I can get you a good survey.
The main part of it, and I'm like, this is a nice place, it's almost too nice to turn it into an industrial park, you know, it's a beautiful property.
I'm just, I'm just going to make this comment, it's what you said, and you're here, and another person's in Dallas, and kind of like by putting his note in there, but knowing what you're wanting to put in, to me, it sounds like something we'd like to have. There's a need for it. Now, I used to work for the government, and I'm pretty sure what this guy's anticipating, he's a middleman for the federal government, to go out and build some buildings like down there in FSA and in RCS. Because that's kind of, they're kind of cramped up in space, so this guy's going to go in here, find the property, build a GSA spec business thing. I would think what they're trying to do is more fitting for the property and the location. Versus sit there and say, there could be a new, we always call it kind of a federal building to a certain degree. Then this guy's going on the rest of the land, then he's going to do something else with what's there. So, with that said, this is my two cents worth. I appreciate it.
I appreciate that too, that's the kind of we wanted to do, you know, we really like Madison County, I mean, we, you know, we've been in Hinesville, and we've, we've, you know, worked on the old building there, trying to fix it up and all that kind of stuff. We just like Hinesville or Huntsville or Madison County.
Absolutely.
Did he have something, Jennifer?
I just wanted to make sure that council is aware, in November of 24, we adopted a new zoning map. Previously, the industrial wallpaper, wallpaper place was going to go there. We did rezone it, so what they're wanting to do is permitted, it's currently zoned a dual-use, which would be C2 or R1. So it's at that single-family platform just.
Well, like I said, like I told this, this other gentleman today, I said, you know, I can appreciate where you're coming from, and I can appreciate you wanting, and thanks so much for the interest. Sounds to me like, and then I tend to agree with Steve on this, it sounds to me like this old boy's going to be up here looking for a place to do this anyway.
Well, not even so much on that, but where it was past the time we've kicked this can for a long time.
I'm ready to put it behind us.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and sell two Blue Ribbon Properties.
So we got a motion, we've got a second, we need to take a voice vote. Go ahead.
I was going to ask about like, just like the road, and we discussed that, what's going to happen with the road, or maybe discuss like.
I think with what we did on the road, it's going to be, for that kind of use, will be fine.
The thing that I would say is, and you and I didn't really get down in the weeds about this, but I told you, and I think that I told you on the phone, that in the past, what we've allowed for the road is, is planning allowed some variances on the road. So for what they're talking about doing, if we can save a little bit of money as far as the sidewalks all the way down the end of the road, obviously it'd have to drain right, and there'd have to be some, probably some curb and guttering. You're going to have to widen the road no matter what.
Yes.
Once, once we've allowed for those variances, we've already set that up in the past to allow for that. So we would, we would, we would allow them the same variances, I'm sure. Obviously, after they went to the Planning Commission and had a game plan and a design plan that they want to do for the road. So I think that we would, we would help them just the same as we helped the other company.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
How soon, when you make your proposal to the Plan Commission about what you're wanting to do with the property, are you going to go ahead and have a kind of a full detail of all the property, and just kind, how you figure it to be used for?
So I have, already have an engineer that is waiting to hear if we're going to get the property. And then we'll put, kind of put our idea of what we're looking at, because obviously we don't have a survey, we don't even know what really the property is. But once we get that, we have an idea what we want to do, and we'll do it probably in stages. Do a, you know, upper part of it in stage, and come, come down the hill, work our way to, in the best use of the property for whatever we're trying to do. And whatever works, we'll have, I mean, it's going to, obviously we have, there's going to be drainage and.
Yeah, well, and to that point, Jennifer reminded me too, just so you know, we had an engineered design plan on the road. Our engineer had fixed it up to actual industrial specification. That, that come in at 200 and some odd thousand. We then talked to some other people with light industrial in mind, which was probably thicker than, thicker concrete or asphalt than what you're going to be considering, and it come in considerably less, like 70 or 80,000 bucks to get the road up through there. So in full disclosure, I want you all to know that. So, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I want to ask you all to amend your motion, do we want to ask for earnest money? Any suggestions?
Take 10% of it?
What would that be?
29,000?
Yeah, so the only reason we didn't offer earnest money is because that money goes into escrow. You know, it's real hard to keep track of, so.
You know, 10%, Jennifer, tell me, you're in real estate, 1% is typically.
So that's 2,900. So let's make it five, I'll make a motion to amend it to 5,000.
I'll drop it off tomorrow.
That'd be fine.
Where would you like to?
You'll bring it down here, do you know what time you're going to come down by?
It'll probably, I have to run Rogers first in the morning.
Why don't you?
I can come down.
He can come first thing.
I'll give you my number, if you'll stick around, I'll give you my number. Let's, let's meet up, and that way we can execute the contract if we, if we have to vote for it, so. So we have a motion, we have a second, we need to take a voice vote on this, please.
Stephen Ford.
Yes.
Kevin Matholler. Leslie Evans. Crystal Lacy. Roger Ove.
Yes.
Scott Thomas.
Yes.
Bettina Cogurt. All yeses.
Thank you very much.
So we will, I'll give you my number, and you and I will catch up tomorrow, and we'll execute this thing, okay?
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You've made us happy.
Made us happy.
And you'll make it nice.
Oh, I know you will.
I love the ponds, I love the caves, it'll be, it'll be pretty.
Okay, all right, well, thank you all. I appreciate council entertaining that request, and I think we've done the right thing on that, to be quite honest with you. All right, on to new business, let's wrap this thing up. Resolution. 21?
19.
Okay, 19 first, 19-2024 budget amendment for 2024, all right.
I don't have to read anything.
I understand. This is a budget amendment, right?
Yep, it is an amendment.
It's an amendment for this year's budget, for the amount of.
910.
You're fine, yeah, go ahead. Okay, all right, thank you. Do we have a motion on that resolution?
Make motion.
Got a motion, got a second? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign? Hearing none? Resolution passes. Resolution 20-2024 proposed budget. Okay, there's the resolution up on the screen. Quickly, I'm going to go over this really quick, I'm very proud of where we have come up with. God bless you, Janice, man. And because I'm telling you, without, without her, I'd have felt that we never got through this. So thank you so much, Janice, thank you, Carmen, for your input. But real quickly, 5% overall increase is the total number that we're at. So I'm going to go through these quick hitters here. 2024, we had budgeted with the budget adjustments that we just made, $3,314,382.30. Our new proposed budget for 2025, $3,507,205.20. That is only a 5% overall increase. Quick hitters on this. Administrative expenses, we took our administrative expenses for 2024 from 7/31 to 3/41 to $994,010.92. That's a 26% increase in administrative expenses. Police Department, 1% change, and that's by adding a new officer. See, whenever we tighten the belt, it does wonders for us. Police Department, we added a new officer January 1st of this upcoming year. We went from an annual budget of 1.2 million, 1.261 million to 1.263 million. So fantastic job there. And that's actually adding an employee to the city. Fire Department, one of our largest increases, and I'm going to tell you why. $318,984 was our annual budget for 2024. In 2025, we increased that to $443,070. $100,000 of that is a savings fund for land and building for, for the new service and training center. And another 50,000 we put in for vehicle savings for the latter truck. So these are two key components that'll make our fire department more successful. I'm really, really happy with that. Court Department, 4.5% increase. Economic Development, 33% increase. Now with that, under Economic Development, Brandy has agreed that she's going to help us out. Our social media and how we advertise is just, to be quite honest, subpar. That's the best way to put it. Brandy, that's her background, and, and she's going to take a more active role here at City Hall as well. We appreciate what she does for the Economic Development bunch, and we appreciate you that serve on that committee. But we took that from $57,587 in 2024 to $86,189.50. General Fund, Animal Control went up about 10.5%. Building Inspector, Inspector expenses are going to go up about 12%. Code Enforcement expenses, now that we've got Jeremy kind of lined out, we're actually going to decrease that by about 33.5%. So that was our largest decrease. Street Fund, obviously under the revenue, we had an increase of 29% overall from budgeted $442,000 worth of revenue to $625,000 in 2025. Which also means, as we know in the Street, in the Street Department, our other expenses included in that is going to increase. in the street department, our other expenses included in that is going to increase over twenty-nine percent. So we're going to take our street department budget from four hundred and thirty-five thousand total to six hundred and eighteen, or six hundred and eighteen thousand total. Park fund, ninety-one thousand, seven fifty. Airport fund, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one seventy-five. Industrial park fund, which is now that we've solidified that, once this thing goes through, we have sixty thousand, six hundred dollars that we're going to have to make a decision on what to do with that money once we, once we sell the industrial park land. General fund reserve, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. We'll, we'll be bringing a proposal to you next year to do away with that. We have more than enough in our CDs right now, so we're golden there. Lot fees, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. Fire Act eight thirty-three fund, thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy is what's proposed. Police Act nine eighty-eight, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy. Special projects, twenty, two thousand, twenty dollars under police special project and prisoner act eleven eighty-eight fund, sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Court automation fund, sixty-three thousand, three hundred. Administration of Justice Fund, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Wastewater facility, two hundred and twelve dollars, fifty cents. Looking a little bleak there. And then the water tank, tank construction bond, twenty twenty-five, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. That's the quick hitters, guys. I am, I'm pleased to announce that. Available funds, what we proposed in twenty twenty-five is five million, seven hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, of which we plan on spending three million, five hundred, seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars and two cents, with unallocated being two million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. With the potential, once we adopt this budget and, and, I mean, once you approve this resolution, we, we plan on in twenty twenty-five socking away another four hundred thousand dollars into a CD, which will get us to a grand total of over a million dollars, first time ever in our history that we'll save a million bucks. So, four hundred thousand dollars of possible new, new CD with unallocated bringing in at one point seven nine five million dollars. Fiscally, guys, we have hit a home run with this budget and I'm overly pleased with it with only a five percent increase in fiscal twenty-four, fiscal twenty-five. That's, that's fantastic, so.
Make a motion for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four. Good job, gentlemen, ladies.
Got a first, got a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Go. All right, now then, resolution twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four. I didn't write it down.
Uh, that was the, that's the, um, uh, direct deposit.
Direct deposit, okay, yes. Do I have a motion on this one? This is, this is all of us going to direct deposit by January the second.
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Raj, got a second by Steve, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Fantastic, all right. Announcements, comments. Economic Development Commission meeting, that's to be determined. Water and sewer commission meeting Thursday, December the nineteenth at twelve P M. Planning commission meeting Monday, December the sixteenth at six. City council meeting, January the something, January the eleventh, right?
It'd be January thirteenth.
January thirteenth. I'll expect gifts, that's the day before my birthday. We'll, we'll, joking. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, and then lastly, one more time, announcing this. City employee Christmas party, December the eighteenth at twelve o'clock. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Sean. And, oh, yeah, and by the way, we do need everybody, if you, we need you to RSVP, everybody that's planning on attending this to Carmen by Friday, Thursday.
Thursday, right.
Do you have commissioners as well?
No.
I guess, Jared.
Oh, including Jared.
There's no way we're keeping you out.
I did want to add though that the parade, I've been to several parades over the last fifty years and that by far the largest. I feel like it's for better community.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, the crowd was.
Just free as I can with these always through the whole round.
Absolutely.
And thanks to the chamber for organizing.
Oh, yes, absolute shout-out to the chamber for organizing that thing. It, it went off like game, but.
And they changed the way they did some of the stuff this year and that helped, I'm sure.
Kudos to Brian Robinson and his, his ability to block off and quarantine off everything. It was like, knocks up there, I couldn't even get the car down there, not even behind. And the chamber, I think, is going to furnish you all some food, donut, something.
Not just me, but the rest of the guys.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's for sure.
If food's involved, I do want to remind you that the firetrocks were blocking, so.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion for adjournment.
All right.
All right, don't forget, they're sitting out here waiting on you to come see the KME.
Yes, yes. Please stop by and see that thing.
That's been a long time.